Welcome to the July 20th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors.
Close session, item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hopkins regarding the following employee organizations: SEIU Local 2015 for In-Home Supportive Services, IHSS, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union.
Any public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay. Number two?
Item number two pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Matthew Mitchlock et al. vs. County of Calaveras Superior Court Case Number 18CV43075.
Public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you.
Item number three pursuant to Government Code Section 54657B1, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Titles: Planning Director, Chief Building Official, County Librarian, Environmental Management Administrator, Public Works Director, County Administrative Officer, Health and Human Services Agency Director.
Public comment?
There is no public comment.
With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome back to the July 20th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Garamendi.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you report out on closed session?
Closed session, item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hopkins regarding the following employee organizations: SEIU Local 2015 for In-Home Supportive Services, IHSS, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. No reportable action taken. Number two pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Matthew Mitchlock et al. vs. County of Calaveras Superior Court Case Number 18CV43075. No reportable action taken. Item number two pursuant to Government Code Section 54657B1, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Titles: Planning Director, Chief Building Official, County Librarian, Environmental Management Administrator, Public Works Director, County Administrative Officer, Health and Human Services Agency Director. No reportable action taken. The report out for July 13th?
Yes, please.
Item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance vs. Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Subbasin Sustainability Plan et al. Stanislaus County Superior Court Case CV20001720. There was no reportable action taken. Item number two pursuant to Government Code Section 54657B1, Public Employment Title: Planning Director. No reportable action taken. Item number three pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Greer et al. vs. County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CV43460. No reportable action taken. Item number four pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation County of Shasta et al. vs. America Source Bergen Drug Corporation et al. In regards to Purdue Pharma LP. No reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Allen.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Corey Allen, your Service Agency Director. I wanted to come today to talk to you.
Brian Dugolden submitted a project to the American Public Health Association, which is a national association for public health in relation to a project that he himself created and worked through in support of your public health division. He works with Program Manager Kelsey Holmes, and I wanted to just simply advise you about this acknowledgement and project. His project is the overcoming technology barriers, how a rural public health department developed a dynamic investigation and tracing data gathering and report system. It was selected out of up to 1,000 or more submissions as a concept that demonstrates true creative problem solving during something as large as a worldwide pandemic. And it goes without saying that that represents the absolute creative and innovative leadership that you have here in Calaveras County. What this will do is, at a national level, inform other small and rural communities throughout the nation on how we can solve problems. So with that, my congratulations goes to Brian Dugolden and Kelsey Holmes for demonstrating outstanding innovation and leadership at the national level.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Further staff announcements? Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to pull item 10 from the regular agenda today. The Clerk of the Board and I are still working on refining some of the language for the revised board rules, and so we'd like to just bring that back at a future meeting.
We're all good with that consensus of the Board? Ms. Coway? Mic, please.
I don't have a problem with that, but there is something that I'd like to add. I'd like to add item 2022, I think it was.
Rule 22?
Yes. The, okay, what's the word I'm looking for? After the Board talks, then it goes back to the public, then it goes...
Oh, I believe the rule 22 refers to it as a sir rebuttal.
I'd like that omitted. I'd like that to be considered for Board discussion on Rule 22 when you're doing it.
Okay.
The Board has no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that. Ms. Fulendorf? Okay? Yes, Mr. Toffnelli? Mr. Garamendi?
Yes.
Okay, so the Clerk and I will work on a revision to Rule 20 and to Rule 22 and bring that back to the Board's consideration.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Any further staff comments?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chair Stoffer and respective Board members. Deputy Clerk of the Board and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Good morning, everybody. So I wanted to just remind everybody that in September, we have another free rabies and microchip clinic on Saturday, September 4th. Dr. Mike Hayes will be participating, the participating veterinarian. And thank you to our friends from Focus. The summer is flying, so I just want to make sure that our community is aware of this really very special event, and we look forward to seeing everybody at the event on Saturday, September 4th at Spence Feed and Supply in Angels Camp. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Further staff comments?
There are no further staff comments.
With that, we'll move to public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Public comment. Mr. Pitto.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. I take it you've all received the notice I put out, verbal as well as written? Is this correct?
Yes, on my behalf.
Yes? I mean...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I see Mrs. Turner is not here, so I imagine, would I be out of the realm of questions to suggest that she's been put on some sort of administrative leave?
Sir, this is not a back and forth. I'm not a...
Okay.
We don't reply to public comment at this time.
Okay, okay. Now, I see item number 10 got pulled from the agenda, correct? Okay, back and forth. I apologize. Let me rephrase that. I guess since this isn't a back and forth, okay, public comment. That was laid out in 1463 of California Government Code. If you look further down in the code, it specifically states how it's to fall in line with 1457 to 1460.1, as far as what 1463 it will allow, which goes along with 1481. And 1459 is clearly within that realm. So I bring this forth to the Board mainly primarily as a means of holding my government officials accountable to the laws to which they helped create. That's the purpose of bringing this forth. And I would really like to hear when this might be put on the agenda, and specifically when item number 10 of today's agenda is to be dealt with. With that being said, I do open, I'm available to any of you, any such time you would like to contact me, discuss this further, but this is an issue that, you know, I mean, the clerk recorder has been operating, discharging the duties of her office without having proper bonds on file since the day she took office, which is clearly laid out in 1459. And I have issue with that, as well as many people, as many people do. So I have come to the Board asking for, well, asking for this to be dealt with.
Thank you.
One other, one other comment.
Your three, three minutes is up.
Okay, well, I will go ahead and yield to the...
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and the Board. I'm Donna Farr from District 2. I came here to talk about item 10, which has been removed, so I am guessing that I can go ahead and do it now. I just wanted to let you know that I opposed the part where you were going to remove public input into modifying the consent agenda. I feel that that is your attempt to suppress public input into county business, and it's not acceptable. We, the people, have, should have the right to remove any item from the consent agenda so that it can be discussed more thoroughly. Have there been abuses of this process? Sure, but those are not common. And I urge you to, since you are going to look into this further, to continue to allow public to remove items from the consent agenda for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farr. Further public comment?
Yes, I do have one public comment online. You may go ahead and make your comment now.
Hi, this is Vicki Ranky from Angels Camp. I just wanted to also say that I was going to be commenting on item 10. I'm glad it got pulled, and I hope when you go to look at the revisions that you take into consideration your own policies that state encourage broader public participation. So I hope that when you go back to redo this, it doesn't remove the right for public to pull items from consent calendar, but that you open it up and make your policies more public-friendly. You are our government, you are our representatives, and we do want to participate in some of the decisions that are made, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ranky. Further public comment?
There is no further public comment.
With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Any staff members want to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I have no staff members that want to pull items.
Board members? And then I understand a public, member of the public wants to pull item number seven?
That's correct. They are on the line right now.
Very good. So we'll open up with item seven, or actually, I'll entertain a motion on the remainder.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. Mr. Garamendi, it looks like you got...
Second.
A second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes a 5-0 vote of the Board. Let's move on to item seven.
Mr. Reilich, you can make your comment now.
Very good. Thank you very much. I am Dustin Reilich with Deckard Technologies. Thank you for hearing me today, Chair and Board of Supervisors. On item number seven, your treasure and tax collector, while inadvertently moved forward with, making a decision to move forward with Granicus, which is post-compliance, for your identification of short-term vacation rentals in the county. I'm a service that also provides that. I'm a CSAC Platinum member. I'm also part of Cactic as a sponsor there for the Treasurers Association, but I just think that maybe staff didn't know that I was available to be able to put out an RFP or take a look at things. We show presently over 700 active short-term vacation rentals in Calaveras County, and I took a look at the contract that's being issued by this Board or being asked to be issued, and our same bid would be about $35,000 approximately per year, which would save the county over $40,000 on a three-year agreement. I would just ask that hopefully this can be pulled and the treasure tax collector can do a demo of our system, take a look at it, to see how we provide better services. We're the premier provider of short-term rental services, and we have the ability to, we're the only ones that have the ability to look into the future, scrape all of your calendars on a daily basis to give you intel as to the daily activity with booking activity, with the dates that are booked, the rate that was listed at the time of booking. All of the other platforms such as Granicus look at your historical data only, looking at reviews that are done by, by people that have stayed at a property. I ask you that you would maybe consider this, and hopefully we have the opportunity as being a Cactic and CSAC member that we have the ability to do a bid on this process as well for creating fairness in the marketplace and transparency. Thank you very much, and my contact's Dustin at Deckard, D-E-C-K-A-R-D.com if you'd like to have staff reach out to me. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Dustin. Ms. Sullivan?
Good morning.
How are you doing?
I'm doing okay.
It's good, good to hear your voice. It's been some time. If we, if we were to possibly put this off for the time being, what would that set you back?
I have to mention that administration is the one that's breaking this contract forward.
Right.
It's only that they talked with my office regarding the collection process because we've had it for the last three years. So it would have to be between Krista and I to decide this.
Right. I just was talking to Krista about it. I just want to see how, if we, if we were to postpone this right now, how long would that put you out, or is there, is there a timeline?
When you say put me out, we're still working with HOST, so I don't know what this would do with our contract currently.
Right, so my understanding is that the existing contract has either recently expired or about to expire, Ms. Sullivan, so I guess the question is, if we were to bring, if we were to bring back this item in the immediate term, say, the remainder of July and August until we could get a firmer recommendation for the Board, what would that mean in terms of your collections of TOT and managing your department between now and then?
It wouldn't change anything right now. It'd be a matter of contacting HOST and letting them know where we're at. This is kind of going to be last minute. We've been dealing with them for three years, just getting it fine-tuned, so we can pull it and talk if you'd like.
And that, I think, brings the second question, which is, in terms of staff hours and investment and getting this, the existing structure with HOST implemented, how, has that been a three-year process, or what was, what was that lift like?
It takes a while, just to get to the compliance level we're at, which is about 85, 88%. It took us a good year, so I don't, I don't know, tell you, I'm kind of surprised at this, so. I would prefer to go forward at this point, but I don't think, if you want to do a year contract instead of a three-year, that would be my only suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, and I appreciate your recommendation there.
I appreciate your input, Ms. Sullivan.
Sure, no problem.
Any further public comment on this item?
No, there is not.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'm confused. So is this administrative item or is this a tax collect?
So this is an unusual contract, and as much as it is the only contract, in fact, other than our rounding, $10 rounding expense, the only expense budgeted in general revenues. And the reason why it is budgeted in general revenues is because it is for, it is to track and make sure that we're capturing as much of the TOT collections as accounting that we can. That's for that reason, and due to the fact that the tax collector's office is lightly staffed, administration has taken the lead with this contract. However, it is a contract for work that is performed in the office of the treasure or tax collector.
So you guys have coordinated on this?
Yes.
Selection?
Yes.
Okay.
This selection went back, I think, two or three years ago by a prior, prior CAO in connection with, working with Ms. Sullivan at that time.
My question is, I want to make sure that we're...
Yeah.
Coordinated. And there was an open process to this?
Actually, there was no, I, I believe that there was no RFP or RFQ process done. I believe that the, then CAO and perhaps with the assistance of the treasure or tax collector went out and selected this vendor.
I might say there was not too many vendors available at the time doing this.
Any further Board input or a motion? What the choice is, we can move forward with the contract now, as Ms. Sullivan said she would prefer to, or...
I would move this out, Mr. Chair, with Mark Sullivan wanting to board with this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. I have a motion by Mr. Toffnelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes a 5-0 vote of the Board. Thank you. Thank you for your time, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
With that, we'll take a 10-minute break. We'll be moving on to the regular agenda at this time. Item 10 has been pulled. Item 11, informational item, building. Receive a presentation from the chief building official and provide direction, guidance on building department policies and program goals. You may be on mute. Your mute's off. It says it's unmuted. Well, let's just do, let's just do a quick, quick break, and if not, then we'll move on to the next item and go back to him until this is solved. Welcome back. We'll start Agenda Item 11 again. Informational item, building. Receive a presentation from the chief building official and provide direction, guidance on building, department policies, and program goals. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Good to see you.
Nice to see you all as well. Chairman, Members of the Board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. I'm going to apologize for that technical error. Brand-new computer, can't do a thing with it. Since I am now in front of you, I'm going to talk my way through the PowerPoint presentation, and I will do my best to try and paint visual images of, of what I intended to convey today. Just to streamline this, because I know that we're pressed for time. Our department has made a lot of changes last fiscal year. It's my intent to bring you reports every fiscal year of our progress, and today is no, you know, essentially it's the first, first step on that process. For all of you football lovers out there, last year we gained 10 yards, it's first down, and we are now selecting the next play, see if we can gain another 10 yards. For everybody who doesn't know football out there in the world, I apologize. That being said, the first step in this is really prioritizing our goals for the department, and then getting into a couple of critical items that I would like to seek guidance from your Board on, items that have popped up recently. First, the prioritization. Working with staff in the last few months and with my management team, we've come up with a series of, of critical items for us to prioritize and accomplish this year. First and foremost in our mind is staff training, and I say that in a broader sense because we are required as, as code officials to obtain 45 hours of training every three years on code updates. However, we're in a unique position in this county. This building department has seen a lot of staff turnover in a short period of time. Before I came onboard and on into the first year of my employment here, we've, we've essentially lost our institutional knowledge. All of the people who've been here a long time, they've retired, they've moved on. We've selected new staff, and so we have not just code training that we're talking about here, but training to the traditions in this community, traditions of code administration in general. And we can teach a person all the code knowledge in the world, but how to interface with people, customer service expectation... customer service expectations for this community. There's a lot there that are soft skills that are built into this job that is priority. Now, we've seen a lot of success in the last few years with some of the changes we've made to the front counter, some of our customer service expectations, and staff has done an excellent job in adapting. I want to push that further. There's been some good feedback from your board over some of the concerns that we can make changes to streamline our plan of view process a little better and enhance our building inspection services through better customer service, but it starts with the training on expectations and understanding traditions in this community and how government should be interfacing in a manner that is always providing something useful, something educational, something for the customer. So it's not just someone arriving and giving you a list of corrections and saying, "Have a nice day." The wisdom behind the code has to be expressed to the public in a manner that makes a person feel comfortable working with government. So that's part of our training expectations. And some of the venues for that training include working with other jurisdictions, working with contractors in the field that are experts in their field. It's not just ICC, you know, two meetings a year. It's a deeper development of how we do our job. So that's been identified as our topmost priority, at least in my recommendations. We need to focus on the broader scope of how we train our staff. In addition, the next item we've identified is complete overhaul of the informational material that we provide to the public. In reviewing everything that we have in our website and handouts at the front counter, much of what we have is up to two code cycles out of date. Now, some of that information is valid, but laced within those documents are things that are out of date. It sows confusion. It could be considered misdirection in some cases, and so we've been slowly stripping those out. Now it's time to start putting out fresh information with current processes, newer streamlined opportunities to work the public through the system as easily as possible. So much of what we're going to be doing is focusing on better interface through the information we provide to the public, which also leads to Item 3, which is improved handouts for permit application processes. We don't have a lot of that. We have some, and this is common, but we want to advance beyond common. Common would be a, here's your building permit application, here's our submittal standards. Well, every project type in a rural community has a variety of different application requirements. Some structures may only require a foundation. Some of them might require all the way up to, you know, floor plans, electrical plans, you name it. It gets pretty complex on the larger projects. Rather than providing one document and saying, "Tear out the pages that don't apply to you," we want to move forward with specific handouts for the public on how to negotiate specific application types. So I want to build a garage. I want to build a deck. I want to build a single-family dwelling. We're going to have more specific guidance that we can provide for that person for their project and hopefully give them a, well, just an easier time of it. It can be pretty complex with the codes that we have, especially as codes advance in California every three years. It's time to work smarter and provide more information to the public. So that being said, our next item, once we have that, it's time to overhaul our website completely. We've already started taking down some of the stuff that is out of date on our website. We've began including items, but we need to really hone our focus on that and get it switched over as soon as possible. We want to provide links to our permit tracking system, which is one of the other items on this list. The website should be intuitive to the public. It is not. Our website should be as helpful as if we were talking to someone at the counter. Currently, it is not. So we've identified that as one of our primary items for this year that we need to sort out. So moving on to that, staff training we've identified is important. How we do our outreach is important. That really culminates in the public training. And this is an item that I've mentioned to your board before, is one of the things that I've done in the past in other jurisdictions, has been very effective. And it's time for us to start doing that. We've taken a lot of barriers down in older processes. We've provided better streamlining. Now it's time to reach out to the public and share with them what we do and how we do it, how we work better for them, and provide them the basic code information that they may not be aware of so that they can negotiate the process easier. It's also an opportunity for us to get out there on some of our more important code items recently, fire protection especially, being able to tie in with our local fire districts and provide something to the public that gives them a sense of what they can expect when they come to the counter to get a building permit, what fire requirements we're going to be helping them through so that we can have a more resilient community. That being said, not only are we going to overhaul the informational material, we're going to expand over-the-counter building permits. Our goal is to provide a lot more opportunity for people to walk in and get what they need and walk out. That will lead me into a discussion a little later on where we talk about some of our things like decks and carports that in a lot of jurisdictions, it's easy to have a handout because they're flat and they don't have a lot of wind and they have, you know, their local considerations are pretty bland. They don't have snow. So it's very easy to have a handout that someone can fill out and turn in. We have some challenges, but it is a goal worth attacking this year, so I want to share that a little later on, some of my ideas about how we can make that happen, which are currently in progress, but I will need some guidance on some of the technical aspects. And then a complete rollout of our eTrackIt public access to our permit tracking system. We are in, I believe, the fourth month of testing. We've had several members of the public working with us. They've been interfacing in the system, obtaining permit or filing permit applications. They've been submitting their documents electronically, including plans, and in some cases, we've been doing electronic plan review. We've tested this a couple of different ways of doing that. And we're also collecting inspection requests electronically through this test group. It's been largely successful. We want to give it a couple more months of testing so we can really take a good look at how far we want to push it out. The goal this year, though, is to open it up to the public for all services with maybe some restrictions on some of the online plan submittals, some of the larger buildings, the complexity of those buildings. We may not have the capacity to handle an electronic review of that size with the technology we have, but we're very close. We've made some good decisions on technology. We just, we need to get a little more time under our belt in the process to feel comfortable moving it out to everything. But we've had some good success there. We want to continue to push it forward. And finally, we want to implement a Phase 2 on the electronic plan review right now. We are looking at smaller projects through smaller screens, through basic Adobe software. There is a system that I want to get that's relatively cheap that can really expand our plan review. I want to be able to push it out to where someone could electronically submit for anything up to a single-family dwelling, agricultural structures, anything that is a residential plan to begin with and test that water before we move into commercial submittals. That's going to be something that I'm hoping to move forward later in the year unless your board decides that that is a priority and you'd like that pushed to the top. Most everything I've given you in this list is essentially in that order, but part of this is me expressing what my staff and I agree are the priorities and how we rank them, but should you want to push any of these items up to the top and say, "We would prefer you focus on this," we're here to listen to your input and make adjustments accordingly. Before I move on into the policy direction items, would you like to discuss and provide any direction on this prioritization list?
I think, oh, Ms. Cowley?
I mean, my feeling is you're the department head. You and your team, that's up to you. There's nothing to shake. But I did have a question on decks. They, I can only speak in the Ebbets Pass corridor, but almost all of them need to be engineered. But there's no engineers to do it. Terry Weatherby's about the only one left. So how does that impact the customer in your work? Are there ways that there could be a model that, you know, if your deck's three stories up or these conditions?
I guess to go to Star Wars quote, clever tricks and nonsense. There's a way we can set up a handout that would work. There's a couple options I'd like to talk towards at the end of the program that lends directly to what you're talking about. Yes, there's one structural engineer. There's a handful of civil engineers in the area. Snow loading is always a concern, especially in the high country where you have unconditioned areas. Snow sits, builds up, and then the deck collapses. And decks have been a significant concern in California over the last few years because of rot conditions, overloading from, you know, you can just Google "deck collapse" and you'll see a series of things that have raised significant concerns. We want to provide a deck handout that can capture the greatest area of the county and provide good information that is helpful. I think there's a way to do it through a couple of different options. Part of it is taking some of it on ourselves as far as the design through other approved means, and then there's the, what if we get an engineer? So I do want to talk about that a little later on in the program, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Just one thing. I mean, yeah, these are all things we've discussed in the past. I'm good with your prioritization list. It's all stuff that needs to be addressed. Your rollout of eTrackIt, you said you would like to wait a couple more months before you would like, you want to go through a couple more months of testing prior to rolling that out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Understood. Let's move on if there's no more forward questions.
Wait a minute, I do have one more, Ms. Oliver. The lead time, I know you've talked about lead times to get a permit, so something is in plan check. Is it possible that on the website, when you get to that point, that we could tell the public what the lead time might be? Because it could change during the summer than it is in January. But, you know, the lead time for a single-family home or changing out a water heater, whatever, all the different examples of how long it takes?
Yes.
Just sort of information. I mean, the problem is, of course, it always has to be updated every week or month, two weeks.
No, I agree with you. In fact, I've already instructed staff that will be providing quarterly reports to the public and your board on our activity in all sections. So what's our turnaround time on plan review in each area? What's our volume of permit applications, inspections, you name it? I want to give an overview quarterly to the public, so every three months, people are going to know. But in addition, we'll be working with staff monthly on what's our turnaround time look like so that we can give a snapshot at the counter. At the very least, we should be providing quarterly information to the public on our website. So we will be providing that. In fact, in-
I guess I look at it as the public. I mean, whether you have 200 jobs or 2,000 means nothing to me as the public.
Right.
But, oh, a six-week lead time means something to me.
Indeed.
That's kind of what I was coming from. Thank you.
No, I concur with that. We'll be providing that information. Okay. Okay, so moving on into our policy direction, there's a couple of topics I would like to get guidance for in that. One of them is hoop structures in general, and then we have metal buildings or agricultural buildings, and I'll discuss why I think they're kind of, they're similar, but they're not. And then the permit streamlining that I was looking at pushing through for decks and carports. I want to kind of focus on that and see if, you know, what your guidance would be moving forward into streamlining those permits, hopefully down to an over-the-counter type permit eventually. That's really our goal. Starting with the hoop structures, though, we currently have an interpretation that I put forward in consultation with the district fire chiefs and after reviewing some other rural jurisdictions that had a large agricultural component. I did identify, you know, Watsonville, Monterey Bay area, San Benito County, what I did not include here was Humboldt, Mendocino. Those jurisdictions, I got into their languages and started reading what their requirements were and what they considered these hoop structures to be. And then working with the district fire chiefs, we came up with some restrictions, if you will, because ultimately, if you're going to exempt a building from permits, you don't necessarily exempt them from building code unless you're not certain if it's really a building. Hoop structures fall into that category. Is it really a building or is it not a building? And in the last three days, I've gotten a lot of feedback from other jurisdictions on how they're regulating them. And I've gotten information from LA County, San Diego, Santa Barbara, Santa Cruz, Lake County, and then, once again, Humboldt, Mendocino, to kind of confirm some of the information. They all agree that if you have a foundation system and you're pushing out a generally steel or wood product that you have a membrane on, they're calling it a regulatable building. It's a U occupancy. Most of them have adopted Appendix C of the building code, which is specifically agricultural buildings, which increases the allowable square footage and gives you a lot of flexibility on, well, just general size and construction. But most of them have had some form of exemption for hoop structures based on the height, area, and the lack of human occupancy. That's where you can get the pictures from Humboldt County and Mendocino County of rows and rows of hoop structures all packed next to each other across acres. If they, they're limited, and often it's limited to either eight to 12 feet in height, up to 20 foot wide. Some of them are regulated over 1,000 square feet. Some of them are just blanketly, we don't regulate them if you have them, you know, under eight foot. Santa Barbara, actually, their board voted to call it agricultural equipment if it was just metal or plastic hoops with six-mill plastic because of the temporary nature and the fact that farmers were setting them up and taking them down throughout the year. I will say that some of the considerations that popped up regularly were planning or zoning requirements because they were concerned about waste because this plastic degrades. And if it's not disposed of appropriately, it becomes piles of wrecked plastic laying everywhere. So part of the component of concern would be, what are they doing with the waste when they're replacing damaged membranes? Ultimately, the current interpretation that I have is based more on the Mendocino model where you have a maximum height, a maximum width, and a maximum square footage of 1,000 square foot. We went more restrictive than Mendocino by requiring setbacks between them so that fire access can happen and hitting a few other targets. I mean, essentially, our exemption applies if the structure is made entirely of PVC or similar tubing and a maximum of 10-mill plastic. Your maximum height is 12 foot, maximum width is 20 feet, maximum square footage is 1,000 square feet. You have, if it's large enough that people can be in it, you have 75 feet from any point in the structure to an exit, and the exits are required at the ends. There's a 36-inch-wide path to travel that is required to those exits. Multiple structures have a 10-foot minimum fire separation. They must be 50 feet from a dwelling. There are no mechanical heat, heating equipment or other type of equipment in the building. It's essentially at the- It's essentially at the most lighting. And plumbing components are limited to irrigation, piping, and distribution. No CO2 enrichment. Generally, you know, they're either pumping in CO2 where they have a burner that's set up, which is not very conducive to keeping plastic from melting. So we, we don't want them in the building. It can only be used for commercial cultivation, which means we don't want 1,000 square feet of, of a hoop set up for anything in the back of a residential property. This is cultivating, and this isn't, this isn't specific to cannabis cultivation. It's anybody who's cultivating anything. If it's a commercial operation, this rule applies. So that means that if a homeowner wants to build a greenhouse or they wanna build a hoop structure, the standard 120 square foot rule applies. That's, that's currently how it is written. Once again, the, the, the rules vary from, sometimes very broadly between counties based on their specific needs. In all cases that I, that I'm aware of, they don't consider these exemptions for dwellings or residential zoning. It's specifically agriculture or commercial use. Some of them are very specific to cannabis cultivation. I, I happen to be against that. I, I don't feel like it's appropriate to make a special rule for any special industry. I think that if, if it's going to apply, it needs to be broadly across agriculture. But in general, hoop structures, from my knowledge and from what I've learned from my associates in other counties, they don't really fit in the building code. And if you can limit them to they're just pipes with plastic on them, most of them really don't wanna regulate them. They just, especially when you have a high agricultural component in those regions, they, they look to them more as agricultural equipment or, you know, an oddity. But as soon as they put foundations in, that changes the game entirely across counties. The challenges that we have with the, the current interpretation is that some industries have gotten a little confused between when a permit's required and not, cause we are, we are providing specific guidance on exempt structures. But once you're required to comply with the building code, you have to comply with all of it. And that includes the setback requirements, the fire protection requirements. And, and what happens there is they get surprised by a 20-foot separation between buildings. If you're exempt from a permit in general, you're exempt from fire separations. We have been more restrictive with our exemption on fire, on, on the hoop structures and required them to be 10 feet apart. When you are building separate structures that require a building permit and they're the same occupancy type, if you're considering them separate buildings, you have to assume a property line between them and the setback from that property line is 10 feet. So what you end up with is 20 feet between buildings. And our current industries are getting that confused. Now, there is an exception. You can call them one building as long as you don't exceed the maximum square footage. And then you can push them all together right next to each other. Okay? But the maximum square footage ends up being 18,000 square feet. And that's, once again, that raises an issue. Is, is this or is this not a concern when you have that many buildings pushed that close together? And do we even count it a building? At what point do we say we're not terribly concerned about that? Hoop structures in general can go either, well, go many ways for, for this county. We have some options on how we wanna regulate them moving forward. I've thrown out a few here, but there's a couple others that, that we might be able to discuss. And the options I have here is that we could remove the current interpretation and just require permits on all structures over 120 square feet. And then we could potentially limit the enforcement of ag settings to immediate fire life safety concerns, where we can say that, look, permits are required everywhere. In agricultural settings, if you're not violating these things, we won't enforce. I've seen that in other counties. It's a working model, but explain that to some of the public, why we're choosing to enforce in one area where we're not in another. So that's not my, not one of my preferred methods. Require temporary tent permits per fire code and require removal after 180 days. A lot of jurisdictions who have very harsh seasonal environments, they, they normally only have a specific grow season and they take everything down, and they're required to take it down. So the 180-day window works for them. This environment allows cultivators of, of any type to, to stagger their cultivation and get multiple seasons. Now cannabis is the primary beneficiary to this, and they have been able to get up to three harvests in a year, depending on how they set up their, their, their growth cycle. So 180 days may not be, may not be ideal for this community, but it's worth mentioning that we could very easily say, come in and get your permits for hoop structures, and then after 100 days, we make, 180 days, we make sure they get taken down. That's an option. We could review and modify the current interpretation that we have. We could actually maybe even, I would go so far as to say some, we could follow some of the guidance from other jurisdictions and put an exemption into the code, make a specific code modification, change our ordinance code to reflect that in this category, we're going to allow these considerations and, and make it a firm code. I would say that the downside to that is once you specifically put something in ordinance, it becomes rigid and you lose some of the flexibility you get when you, when you keep it within the building code and within interpretations of code. We could also discuss and decide that the current interpretation works for now. We should just watch it and see where it goes. As of right now, the biggest concern is, do we want to call a hoop structure a regulatable structure or not? And, and if that's the case, then do we keep this interpretation as it is or do we modify it to recognize that certain sizes, we don't call it a structure? So that's what we really hope we get guidance from your board on this specific item.
Personally, I do like to leave the flexibility in for the building department. But, you know, there's certain thresholds with, with some of these that are crossed that do need building permits. And I think that goes into what you started this meeting out with is, on your priorities is the handout, so people understand that. You know, you say moderate lighting can go out there, but they still need to put in a panel out there, and we don't allow extension cords running permanent power to anywhere. So at that point, if someone puts in small lighting nevertheless, but permanent lighting that's connected to electrical, there's a threshold that's been crossed for their, their, them needing a building permit, you know? Cause you have to get the electrical permitted. I can understand the irrigation being in the ground, not actually being part of a, let's say hoop house, and that not necessarily crossing that threshold, you know? As it's part of the agriculture and everything that goes in with the agricultural end of it. But that, that's my personal take on the hoop house. You know, I'm more leaning towards the flex, the flexibility within the confines that we have here on the 1,000 square feet. I, I think that's reasonable. But we have thresholds that need to be clear when people come in so that they know that, look, you, you're putting an electrical under this, you're gonna need a permit for the electrical.
So if I understand you correctly, the, the current interpretation isn't the concern, the public outreach on the line is, is what we need to work on. We deliver the message back.
That's my personal perception. Is there any other supervisors that wanna weigh in on the hoop house issue?
I'd be curious to know what the ag community has to say about that. Not just, I, I understand what the trigger is of this specific industry, but what is really the number of hoop houses outside of this specific industry of ag individuals in this community? I don't think, it's not a watching bill. I mean, how often are they, and does it deem more government regulation other than once electrical or some of the actual plumbing? Not, not because they're growing, you know, their lettuce and their farming produce to bring to the farmer's market and it's underground irrigation for water and those items versus something that you're working out of with people residing? I would be curious what the actual numbers are and does it warrant this much regulation rather than just more wisdom out of your office to be able to make that call? I'm a little hesitant on it. I, I would like more feedback from the community, like caliber of growth. What do they produce, individuals that are coming to the farmer's market? What is their take on it? What is the impact on their, on them being able to operate?
So would, would it be helpful to say that our department this year should really reach out in those venues and, and solicit input? Maybe hold a workshop, get them in and, and get the comments from the public on, on what they would like to see moving forward as a, as a greater industry? Okay? That's reasonable? Yeah?
Ms. Coway?
Under age for hoop? What about fans or heaters? Thinking, you know, if you're growing tulips or spinach or the things that Ms. Follendorf talked about with, because I went to a hoop house for flowers and they had fans going. Would that be allowed under age? Or does it get back to what Mr. Stoppler said they need, an inspection if they have electric panels?
Well, anything that is a heat-producing piece of equipment would, if they're setting that up inside this building, it automatically triggers, get a building permit for the structure cause we wanna make sure that it's designed to be fire safe and incorporate that equipment. When it comes to basic electrical, they can, they can get a building permit specifically for that electrical, which could include box fans, things like that that are, that are supported. The, the twist to that is they can't support that equipment, that electrical, those fans from that structure because then, once again, it triggers that structure to be permitted. They need to get an engineer design to support that, cause there's no, there's no conventional guidance on, on engineer, or on designing a hoop structure in the building code. You instantly go to engineering. So we've recommended on electrical in a couple of cases that they, they have an engineer design a, a system that supports the lighting and supports the, the fans that is completely independent of that system, that, that hoop structure. And then we permit that. And what they'll do is they'll design one and then they'll apply it to 20 buildings. But we inspect each one of those and we, we review all the electrical loads for, for fire safety. Yes?
If they put in a foundation, if we, we leave the current interpretation in place, but they use a foundation, they put in a foundation versus dirt? The foundation is permitted, correct?
Yes.
And then they can just build the hoop on top of that?
Well, they would, this whole structure, once, once you change one element and you move into this is a permanent building, the entire building now has to be regulated.
Even if they do, even if the entire structure's entirely PVC?
Yes. Which, which arguably nobody wants to do, because what, what engineer's gonna do that? He's gonna instantly go to take out the PVC and let's put in a metal system in.
Then just one more thing. You said an ordinance kind of locks the department in. What is it that you're recommending?
Currently, I would, I would recommend that we, we continue to use the interpretation we have. And I, and I, I would say that I, I like Supervisor Follendorf's recommendation that we solicit some input from the greater agricultural community and see if we need to revise this and bring it back to your, maybe, maybe do something to make it a little more permanent.
Thank you.
Mr. Derramidi, Mr. Toffnelli?
Which, what Mary brought up, I have several concerns on these things, just visiting the ones that I visited. First off, the number of them that I saw in one area out in the open, just for 22,000 square feet. Major concerns to me are these things are unregulated, these things, there's no permit, so there's no inspection on them. So we have no idea how they're anchored to the ground. We have no idea how a wind of 50 mile an hour gust, 60 mile an hour gust, any mile an hour gust, take these things over three properties over. The ones that I saw, obviously, because there is no inspection and there is no permit, had electrical running through the top, right down the center of them with lights connected to it, because nobody was there to inspect anything. Now, you give the wind load, don't know how they're anchored. I kicked them and the bottom board just, they're, I have no idea what space or what they did on any way to protect anything that could cause a fire or end up on somebody else's property. There's no, because they're not inspected and they're not pre-engineered and run through, through our building department for acceptance, we have no idea how they're setting the distance between the hoops. Is it adequate? Does it just be what they wanna do to get away with, what they wanna get away with? There are people inside these hoop houses on a continuing basis, daily, checking on what they're producing. Just so many of these things that, you talk about plumbing. I, I understand what you're talking about, the plumbing components, which is just underground piping and then the drips irrigation, but there's no, nothing preventing them from increasing that later if we don't have any inspection on any of this thing and what they're doing. And it was very evident on the ones that I saw that that's already just taking place because there was no inspection on it. So in my opinion, because of the numbers of them, we're not just talking about one, one site that they have one or two hoop houses. The ones that we've, I went to had quite a number of them that these things, they, who knows after they do get their initial permit and inspection is done, what's gonna happen to the thing? I think it needs to be regulated. I think it needs to have permits. I think it needs to be inspected. I think there needs to be minimum requirements for these things, just minimum, whatever they are, that, that can withstand, much like other structures, wind speeds within our zone. And distance between hoops, make sure that they're, they're not, they're adequate for what they're being used for. And so you adequately need to be anchored to the ground. Now, whether the foundation needed or not, I don't know. That would have to go through the size of them, what an engineer looks at and say, this is adequate. Do you put pound a post in the ground or anchor it that way, every 12 inches, every three feet, whatever? I don't know. Versus a foundation? I understand with the foundation thing, what automatically kicks in, that it has to be permitted. But I, I still think some way they need to be inspected before they're being used and they are anchored some way that's acceptable for the wind zone, the areas that we have because they are out in the open and there's quite a number of them, so.
Can I address your concerns before we? I, I see your point on that, especially in, in the greater scope when we're talking about, you know, if we're gonna make this apply to everybody who could use this, not just the cannabis industry. The cannabis industry does have some, some unique, unique rules because of the, the permitting process just for their organizations. We, we have to move out in a manner that would suggest that this is for everyone, not just the cannabis industry. The cannabis industry gets inspections annually. The cannabis industry gets inspections annually. And when we catch people that are bad behavior specialists like we've both seen, they get a correction notice and a timeframe to correct or their license is in peril. However, anyone else who's growing tomatoes or, you know, poinsettias or whatever, yeah, they don't have the same level of oversight. So I would say that potentially what we could do is what some of the other counties have done here and that's create an exemption that, it's an exemption, but it's not an exemption. You're exempt from following the entire code process. It distills it down to you fill out this form, you provide a site plan showing where they are. We come out and inspect it once to make sure it's set up right. And then when we leave, if we get a complaint that you've modified it, we treat that as a code compliance and we investigate if you've added anything to the system, then we have you correct it. I mean, that is a working model. There's several counties that have used that type of ag exemption where they set the threshold, you apply under that threshold and it's regulated. That is an option.
There's several counties that they're permitted, you have to get a permit for them. And if you would go to Sonoma County, another Sonoma county, you get a permit for the hoop houses there, you'll get kind of an idea to what I was saying.
I had Sonomas here, I believe.
They're permitted structures, sir.
Yes. Oh, I got everything but Sonomas. Okay. I'll find Sonomas. Okay. Well, I'll let you.
I got one more. Doug, just so I understand. So currently you have A through K here as our current policy, right? No permit required at A through K on your presentation?
Correct, sir.
I have a hard time figuring it out. I have people get confused. It seems pretty straightforward, but apparently they are. So, you know, I agree that, I agree with the current approach. I mean, if you're going to have, if you're just talking about PVC and TARP, I don't see that might be, and plumbing, I don't see it much different than if you're doing a strawberry field and you're laying down plastic and you have your plants coming up. And you're going to have the same problems with blowing around and trash. I don't find either of them to be sightly, but I also don't, you know, this is, I don't think it's something we need to do, but I think I agree with Ben that if you throw in electrical or any of those things, as you clearly stayed here, things just change. But, you know, it's a temporary structure. I don't care whether it's down at Rising Sun or strawberries or anyplace else or your personal garden. We don't need to be in everybody's business on everything. But I do think we ought to spread, we ought to apply this universally across the field. So if we're going to start doing one, we have to do everybody. There's always an exception. That's not a hard rule, but on this one, I think that's the case.
Is the code compliance process a suitable method for regulating this in your mind? Should they be exempt? How do we regulate this? Do we, you know, would the preference of your board be to move towards an exemption process where they actually apply for that exemption and we inspect? Or would your board prefer to maintain the situation where they go ahead and move forward as exempt and then if there's a violation, handle it through the code compliance process?
So just, Doug, so I understand. So if I wanted to put in 300 square feet of hoop house to grow tomatoes, I want to sell them at the farmer's market, you would say, and I'd have to come into your office, tell you so I could seek an exemption before I put that up?
That's the option.
No.
I'm good with what you have here. We just, and, you know, to address some of the other issues you already brought up, there's already an inspection on commercial cultivation that happens yearly that should pick this up and then give them the opportunity to come in within compliance or there's repercussions. I'm on, no. I'm a no beyond what we have here. We just need to follow through on making it clear, which it's clear to me here. Where are you at, Ms. Fuldorff?
If someone can be selling something at the farm, it just doesn't seem common sense to be doing that. I'm on the route with them.
Mr. Toffenelli?
It should be permitted, Doug. I think it should be permitted, like I said.
Ms. Coway?
Keep the same process that we have.
So in keeping the same process, what I've heard is that you would like better outreach, potentially a better handout that's more explanatory and a stronger drive in enforcement when we do find a violation?
Yes. That's what I'm understanding.
I'll add that I will reach out to the agricultural community. I don't mind going to farmer's markets. I'll set up a booth. I'll get some more information.
Just make sure you're Monday, Sunday morning Murphys.
Sunday morning Murphys. Very good.
Mr. Oliver, may I ask you? I'm hearing what you're saying, but code enforcement can't keep up with what they already have with much more significant cases? And how is this going to fit in?
I would say based on the information that you've provided me, I can anticipate that based on the potential fire hazard, if these are not maintained appropriately, this rises to the level of a higher priority. Would your board agree with that?
I don't feel like I can answer that because I know in District 3, we have some significant code enforcement cases that because of the workload, code enforcement officer just can't get to managing them all. I mean, that's no offense against Mr. Rod. He does a really good job. It's just the volume of cases. I mean, I probably don't have any hoop houses in District 3 to speak of.
Well, I can say confidently that our code compliance process is actually fairly manageable right now. We did lose a staff member. However, last year's numbers, we were closing cases and resolving issues at about the same rate we were taking in cases. So, and we are moving forward with streamlining our procedures. We're working with county council right now to bring back some modifications to 806 to clear up some issues there and streamline it further. What you may find that is that we'll be able to compensate, we'll find a way to compensate.
I mean, that's up to you to manage it. I just thought, okay, now we're adding something else to the list of things for code enforcement to do.
I think there's.
I don't even know that we would know at this point what kind of volume we're talking about. It's just a concern in terms of not overwhelming the staff. Thank you.
Mr. Derramendi?
I concur. It's right to Coway. You know, we've got, you know, we've got a process for inspecting the farms. I don't want your code enforcement people running around on every single call on a hoop house when there's a process for that exists, when we've got life and safety issues. People chopping cars with torches and fire-prone areas in the middle of the night seems a little more important to life and safety.
Very good, sir.
I concur.
If there's any other comment? If not, I can, I'll move into the ag slash metal building discussion. Okay, so the, one of the big-ticket items is something that your board mentioned that I bring back to you as part of the fee study was a look into metal buildings. There's a couple of levels here about metal buildings. The process for plan review and inspection, the time it takes for plan review and inspection, and then at the end of that, based on that, what should the fee really be? I wanted to kind of give an overview of what we're really discussing because when we say metal buildings, people hear potentially three different things. We have structural steel buildings, which is what we like to call red iron. It's large moment frames with metal superstructure and often tensioned cables that hold the system together. We have what's called a tube steel structure, which is what you commonly find in carports and in some cases, stables. Am I running out of time? Okay, good. If I get close, let me know. Give me the red light over there.
Just don't look at that clock.
Don't look at the clock, okay?
That one's not right.
Okay. And then we have tube steel, like I say, it's a lot of residential uses, but also in ag for things like stables and shade structures and things like that. And then we have this cold formed steel, which is generally steel stud framing, which is used a lot in commercial, but in some jurisdictions is used a lot in residential building rather than using wood. Most of what we're seeing in this county is the structural steel or the tube steel applications. Structural steel is used for all occupancy types. As a note on that, the building code normally doesn't specify how the job is done based on a material so much as the occupancy type and the fire resistance rating of the material, going all the way through to the price per square foot that's calculated annually and provided through ICC. You can look at the occupancy type and the fire rating of the construction and that tells you what the price per square foot normally is. And generally with metal buildings, if you're classifying it, anything beyond 5B construction, which is basically any material not rated, if you classify it into 2B, which is non-combustible, not rated, the price jumps up significantly per square foot. That being said, my preference has always been to align with the code and not necessarily establish any regulation that would apply to a material but to the occupancy type. So when I say ag or metal buildings, I want to kind of steer away from metal building and focus more on structures that are similar in ag use where it's open bay, not for occupancy. And then maybe extend that a little bit into some residential applications where we know that it's not intended for human occupation and it's going to be basically empty and therefore that will reduce the amount of work we normally see on these things. That being said, the structural steel, I think, is the biggest focus right now because we have a lot of, we had a spike of applications on these structures primarily due to the cannabis program, wanting to get these structures up during this growth season. Structural steel is an engineered product. You have two levels of design. You have the design coming out of the plant by an engineer and then you have the local designer who has engineered the foundation system based on the local soil conditions and the data coming from the plant on how that structures to be anchored to the ground. In some cases where we have unusual soil conditions, there's a soils report and a geotechnical investigation required and that will dictate what you do to the soil before you even put the building in. So there's multiple levels of engineering that go on in these products. Special inspections are required in addition to jurisdictional inspections. And I brought along the special inspection manual. Unfortunately, I don't have my presentation here, but essentially the local jurisdiction has a broad scope of what we look at. And then the special inspection program that the building department is supposed to manage takes care of a series of specific items. So for instance, in a steel building, like a structural steel building, the building department would look at the, everything to do with the layout of the foundation, the steel, the bolt locations, the location on the site and any fire protection requirements for 42, you know, Public Resources Code 4290. And then we do a complete overview of the structure. And then if the concrete is over 3,000 pounds, we would be collecting a special inspection report later because the special inspector will be checking the concrete mixture and doing a break test later to make sure that it comes up to the appropriate strength. So that's an example. Same thing with the frame. Our responsibility is to make sure every frame component is there, it is the right size, there are bolts in place everywhere, and that all of the cables are located in the appropriate place, they are the right size, they are connected appropriately. The special inspector does strength testing on a batch. If it has anything to do with welds, we make sure the welds are there. The special inspector makes sure that they're tested and they are compliant. Now, I know that we've, you know, every county is a little different. Every county does things a little different. My experience in, you know, my experience as a building inspector and working with special inspectors is there is a method that has to be done in order to comply with code. And that needs to be developed and shared with the public before we really do anything. We have to know, you know, the builders have to know what to expect when we get out there and our staff has to have a minimum standard of what they're supposed to look at. I'm going to throw this out here. I don't have a special inspection program set up in this building department. You will have one. Right now, they sign a form and that's it. We need to manage this as it was intended in the code. We need to collect the documents at the appropriate time. We need to approve the special inspectors in this jurisdiction. Every bit of this is 100% required by code because these structures, if not put together right, have significant issues. That information is forthcoming. I mean, I've, going back to training, going back to standards, going back out to public outreach, all those things need to be done. But that's not to say that we can't streamline this process for these structures. That's not to say that we can't distill this down into a quicker process. And that's not to say that we can't streamline the fee structure based on a reduced amount of time we spend on these structures. It's knowing what we're supposed to be looking at and then doing it quickly with effectiveness. So throwing out these, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes on here. We can distill it down. And part of it is knowing what's required and making sure the builders are aware of what we need to get through the system. Tube steel structures are incredibly easy. Our primary plan review is just making sure that the designer has used the appropriate values for the region. We don't want to be crushed under snow. We don't want to be racked by the wind. We don't want it picked up and blown across into the neighbor's yard. So there's very few things because they're carports, they're stables, they're lightweight, not occupied structures by and large. And those are incredibly simple. We don't even, you know, we pare it right down to what are your values? What is a material engineer specifying? And let me see your connections and where you're located on the property. Those can be streamlined very easily. And so that's part of what we're going to be doing is providing a handout for how do you get through for these metal, these tube steel structures? Here's what you provide to us and here's what we can get done. Options there are pretty broad. We could set up one day a week or one day every two weeks where we have a plan checker at the front counter and people can schedule time to come in and get their plan reviewed right there. If we can turn that around in a half hour to an hour, then we're just waiting on the interdepartmental reviews, which is a couple of days. Believe me, anything that we can do on these smaller projects to get it out of the plan review stream makes it faster for everybody else who needs a full review. So tube steel is one of those targets that can be easily resolved. We can, I can kind of highlight what we can do with the structural steel in a second here. But tube steel is incredibly easy. Make sure that I jumped way ahead of my slides, so I apologize. One thing that I do want to point out is on any of these, usually when they're tube steel structures, they're light residential, they're light ag, they don't rise to anything beyond a shed or similar use, which means it doesn't trigger any of the requirements from the fire safe regulations. As soon as you plunk a steel building down. As soon as you plunk a, a steel building down, it's sizable. The fire departments start looking at them as facilities, they start being regulated as facilities. You, you have overlapping requirements now and you have to pick one and go with it. Sometimes if they continue to be a miscellaneous use, they can be exempted from 4290, but if you, if you follow the fire code, you run into facility requirements and you have 20-foot wide roadways, you have 75,000-pound roadways, you have stored water onsite, it triggers a lot of stuff that we have to review beyond just the, you know, the building frame itself. Unless we come up with some streamlined system where we can concur and get the fire districts concurrence that under certain size limitations and use limitations, we can agree that it would be exempt for a handful of those items. Right now, as the code stands and as I, as I understand it, a lot of these triggers happen and we have to review them on every case. And that's part of, that's part of the slowdown in plan review is not just the, the design of the, the structure, but the design of the facility, the design of the site and getting the feedback from, you know, the fire districts to basically get concurrence. That's an extra step. If we can gain concurrence in general, that might speed things up a bit. And most of the stuff that we're talking about here, if we can get it exempted because it's simply an accessory that doesn't have any human occupation, well, once again incredibly helpful if we can just say, let's set this aside and maybe put it in ordinance, adopt an amendment to the building code to recognize these types of structures, we can reduce it quite a bit. I had a whole list of, of ag exemptions. Ah, there we are, Sonoma County. I told you I had it. But we have Sonoma, Stanislaus, Amador, El Dorado. They all have ag exemptions. Once again, those ag exemptions are a program. You do have to apply for the building permit, but it's one, or they might not call it a building permit. It's an, you come in with a site plan and a basic outline and here's the amount of electrical I'm putting in. Okay, you comply with the zoning, your setbacks, stamp go, call us when you're ready for an inspection. If we, if we work forward on an ag exemption, I believe we can streamline the process down quite a bit. It would take an ordinance, it would take a modification to the code to accomplish that. And I do recommend that we spend a lot of time with the fire districts gaining an overall concurrence from the, the joint powers authority. Because if we have one rule on the ordinance and we have nine districts all asking for something different, that could be, that could be taxing for the public and we've got a good relationship with, with the fire district site right now. I think we can accomplish something pretty good here. We do have one concern on as cannabis is special. You know, we can, we can say this is for agriculture, but cannabis still regulated as commercial as it stands. So we have to make sure that we, we recognize that and adjust for it. Because as soon, knowing, knowing that cannabis is primarily commercial, you put a metal building down on a commercial site, all of your regulations for facilities and fire apparatus access, stored water, everything, that's, that's automatic and it's, it's required. And our, our training that we provided at the beginning of the cannabis ordinance covered all of that for them. We do need to reinforce that with this industry. An ag exemption may not help them unless we specifically craft some language for that industry or just anticipate at some point you regulate it as agriculture, it heads that way. I mean, I'm not going to say either way, I'm not the policymaker on this one, but I will say that because it is commercial, it is special, and if we have an ag exemption that just talks about ag, they're still going to be on the hook for everything unless we consider that. Sir?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So if I've got a barn, I want to put up a steel barn to store hay, I could go fall under an ag exemption, assuming we changed it. So I could fall under that and store my hay and I go in and I take the hay out every once in a while. But if you're a cannabis farm and you're storing cannabis, drying, for example, they wouldn't, and under an exemption, they would not have that same ability that I would have for storing hay? Trying to figure out what you're telling us.
It would be, it would be different. So let me give you an example. The barn is a perfect example. Barn on an agricultural lot that is just storing hay, okay? That, that could, that could easily be an ag exemption. We could streamline the process for the structure. And because it is, it is a accessory use in agriculture, it doesn't technically trigger any driveway or roadway requirements from the fire safe regs. Okay, so now, that's because it's agriculture. Cannabis is regulated as commercial, so we could streamline the building, we could streamline the, the, you know, the fire protection, the setbacks, all that stuff and distill it down into a, a, a quick package until you hit the fire code. And those are the components that get triggered. Your roadways change, your fire, your fire flow is required because it's not, it's not agriculture. 4290 kicks in, fire access, everything kicks in.
I understand, thank you.
Hey, hey's, I'm sorry, Ms. Calley.
Hey, hey, here's one example, but there, there's multiple commercial style ag products being put into multiple types of buildings, you know? Whether you're, whether you're, you know, processing, drying your grapes to make, to make raisins, you know? They have buil-, buildings for storage and everything else. You say, now 4290 is a state fire code, right?
Correct.
The state classifies commercial cultivation as an ag product. We call it a commercial product. So there's a little bit of delineation there from what the state calls that product and what we call it.
I was speaking to what we call it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Calley.
So if Mr. Guaramendi becomes a commercial hay supplier, he's still exempt because he's ag versus he's now commercial?
Well, this is where I code geek on you. This is, this is where the job gets fun. If, if you have a barn that you're using on your farm to store your hay, that's different than if I have a building for the storage and distribution of hay for my business. It, it moves from an accessory use for your ag and it moves into a commercial storage facility. And now, now you have a different, you, you have a different regulatory bracket in the, in the building code.
So Mr. Guaramendi as a commercial hay supplier would have to follow the same rules as the cannabis industry?
Correct.
And it's not just storing, let's say marijuana in a commercial cultivation building. At that point, they're processing there too, so they're conducting a commercial activity.
Yes, and, and to be specific about it.
That makes more sense.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Toffinelli?
Yeah, well, I don't want to separate cannabis as a special industry, which is happening right now, right here. If you're going to change commercial building and relax rules for, for that industry, then you're going to have to for all commercial buildings. You can't just separate them out. It wouldn't be fair to other commercial buildings. You'd have finger pointing at you and everything else. So you, it, it is what it is, that's what it is. You start changing rules for a special industry, then, then you're going to have some lawsuits or whatever, you're going to have some problems. If they're commercial, they're commercial. That's what it says. So you start changing those rules and you're going to have somebody come in here saying, gee, you know, I want to put up this, this metal building, this tube steel frame around my storage, this commercial storage facility over here. You allow them over there to not have any regulations, then I don't need that.
Well, it'd be.
We're in agreement.
Yeah, it has to be the same.
No, I, I.
Is that what you just said?
I, I concur with that. I guess I got to rephrase because my intent was to identify that if we focused it as ag, the cannabis guys would be left out. We need to call, you know, whatever exemption it is, agriculture and then in the, in the description include the cannabis industry as well in some manner that your board could approve as a standard.
Understanding that, I'm for moving forward with that standard as it applies to agriculture in its entirety. And I'm also in favor of you working forward on the tube steel and getting it to an over the counter process, if that's possible, to the best point that it's possible. I am looking, I'm looking at here, we're looking at 20 working days for review, you know, for new commercial, you know, what you put forward on May 11th. And, you know, I'm just giving a status example, but the carports that you're talking about for tube steel and things like that, that don't cross that threshold for commercial and everything, definitely a good thing. A lot of this came up was the review time, you know? You and I have discussed this. I think a lot of the, let's say, worries from the people in the community when it came to hold up on the timeframe will be addressed with the priorities you presented towards the beginning. But I'm definitely in favor of working forward on what we can for over the counter. Definitely, we all understand that commercial cultivation is commercial, commercial cultivation, so it's not going to be singled out with agriculture for agriculture exemption, and I'm in favor of agriculture exemption. That's where I sit on it. Commercial cultivation's not part of that though, because it, it's commercial. Yes?
Yeah. I've been in the steel business for 51 years. I've got a little bit of experience on what we're talking about here. And I'm a little bit concerned about the tube steel structures that you're talking about. Are you have a specific list or area size of what you're talking about? Because I've done tube steel structures that are immense and housed people and, and used for office buildings and, and other things. They're strictly all tube steel for the major part of it. You're talking about an engineered product. I don't know what you're talking about. You're talking about the tube steel is engineered itself, just the tube steel. If I went out and bought 20 pieces of four by, four by quarter inch by 20-foot tube steel, I, I don't know what you're talking about when you say engineered product. And then pre-engineered lightweight foundation elements, that would depend on what the structure itself is and what it's, what the size of it and what it's being covered with and what it's being used for. So I'm a little concerned about what we're talking about streamlining for a tube steel building or whatever you're talking about. If you're just talking about a, a carport or something like that, you can buy those already in a kit, already done, pre-done. I can understand maybe that part, but you're talking about special inspection's usually not required. A lot of time, there's welding being done to these tube structures instead of bolting together. A lot of times, they go across the top and they're welded across the top, one around the top and then intermediates in between. So I'm a little concerned on what your specifics are on these and are we going to limit it to certain square footage or height or any of the above things?
Well, when I say tube steel, I was pointing more towards the accessory uses for ag and residential where we can say it's a, it's a U occupancy, it's generally a carport or a stable or something similar. It doesn't rise over 3,000 square feet and they don't use it over more than two-inch steel tubing. What you're discussing is, is the large, you know, the steel tubing systems, which more qualify with the structural steel application. They're not bolting though, they're welding moment frames together, which is a whole different bird. I would say that, that any time you're going to go over two-inch round or square tubing, you, you're right, it's not a pre-packaged, packaged structure anymore and, and that, then it's going to be pushed into the standard review category. We're looking more towards what you were talking about, prepackaged engineered products where you call the company, you say, I want this, they fire out a, a, you know, 500 square foot carport with the instructions and all we need is a site plan and your instructions. I mean, we can, we can, we can play in the realm of the, that, but as soon as you get it over that, you're into different occupancy types, different hazards. So I agree with you, we, we really need to pare it down.
We need to clarify that when it comes up.
Agreed.
So we, if you said tube steel, yeah, I'm going to do this entire building in tube steel. I don't need.
Would you, would you, would you concur with the two-inch, you know, max from two-inch tubing?
It depends on what it's going to be used for. Yeah. If it's a prepackage, you, you went online, you found this carport, these people saw it. Sometimes the poles for those things are larger than two by two, some of them, sometimes they're, they're three by three or four by four tube steel. But prepackage engineer telling you, you know, you need these footings and these four corners, you know, or whatever, can you use for the foundation or the, I can see that streamlined through because most of it's all pre-engineered, to which I'm going to talk about when we get back to your structural steel metal buildings.
May I? That was my understanding. Like, I, I don't think necessarily limiting it to two-inch as much as the actual use carports give it, give it a, you know, maximum square footage, you know? Those, that was my understanding of what you're talking about for the smaller end tube steel type of over the counter items.
Right.
Still needing a permit, still needing an inspection, but it's something that you can see and it's small enough of a footprint where the, and the use is the concern on checking on engineering because of no occupancy and those type of things. That's, that's what I was understanding of what you're referring to.
That's where we're heading, yes.
Yeah, and, and the pre-engineering for the wind loads because they're going to be open generally on one side and the direction they're facing, whether they're facing south, north, east or west, those are the type of things we should be checking for.
Agreed.
To make sure that it's not going to blow away on a large gust of wind. So, but most pre-engineers cover that, pre-engineer buildings, I don't think they cover that, but we still need to check for our zone, our wind speed and others.
I agree. I agree.
I'm, I'm still a little, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. Please.
I, I am still a little conflicted. I mean, if I'm going to put up a two-horse stall kit with a side where you put the feed, and I'm not talking like a big barn, just two, the kit, I, I don't want to come see you.
I, I don't want to come see me either.
Um, so I think.
That was underneath your ag exemption.
So I think it needs to be a little bit more clear because I, I know you don't want, but the interpretation, and I think that's where your outreach and, that need to be cleared up a little bit more.
Well, I would understand that to be that we need a clear line between how we streamline residential small projects and agricultural small projects.
I think, I think that's what we're, we, we are discussing though, because you did bring up the agricultural aspect of it, which would apply to your two-horse stall with your feed, feed side over it.
I mean, you're not talking about a massive barn where you're putting six stalls in and it's, there's a difference between those things and I don't want to be, or even just a simple kit to cover the alfalfa or any other feed. I really don't see why it's any of the county's business on how you're storing your feed.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm a little worried of this.
I, I will, I will give you an example of, of why some of these things require permits.
Okay, if, I want to piggyback on her statement though. I mean, is there anything you can do on your property without getting permission from somebody else?
120 circuit, no.
I know, but, I mean, I, to your earlier question, yes, for the ag exemptions. I, I don't like making special rules. If we want cannabis to come under the ag exemption, we need to declare it an ag product. That's a board choice, but, um, yeah, I, I'm, so yes, for that exemption. But I do agree with Amanda that, I mean, I don't know, it just feels a little uncomfortable just having to get permission to do. just having to get permission to do.
I believe, I understand where you're all coming from on that. I mean, I will quote a man named Chief Rolling Thunder who said, "The first person who got a building permit to put something on his own land should have been shot for treason." So, so we have to come up with something reasonable because the building code is, gives you some play, but if we don't have it defined, then it becomes, it becomes a circus and then we start wondering where is the line? I feel as though that the voice of your board right now is saying, "We need some form of reasonable exemption for specific ag structures and some streamlining for residential structures." I think I've got enough input that I can meet with the ag community and maybe come up and with the fire districts and maybe come up with something that I can bring to your board for discussion. I agree with you, I don't really want to be out inspecting a stable. You know, unless it's, you know, 10,000 square feet with an arena and you're selling tickets. You know, there's, there's a difference, you know. We need to define that difference and I think, I think I understand where you're all coming from at this point.
I think that if there's a coin flip on do we regulate or do we not regulate? And it's equal, but it's leaning towards the not being in everybody's business. I know you agree with me, you don't want to be in everybody's business either.
Agreed.
But it's, it's a slippery slope and that's how folks like that become thicker and thicker and thicker.
So are we, are we?
Should I put forward the question clearly now? This is separate from the ag exemption which we all said yes, or a majority said yes to. A majority said yes to. This is, this is for just a polling on the, we'll call it tube still, but we understand there's a broader definition of tube still for limited types of buildings. You, please define those types of buildings, carports, you know, residential style.
I would go so far as to say that I think we can safely streamline tube steel structures should they stay within two inch steel, two inch tube steel and be pared down to residential accessory structures and limited agricultural structures that don't go over the maximum threshold for a U, which is 3,000 square feet for residential.
For residential, yeah.
Yeah, so that means you can have, you can have a garage made out of it, but you go beyond that. And then, then we talk about ag exemptions, which could, we could do all kinds of stuff with.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't necessarily agree that the two inch tube still needs to be part of that because at that point, someone could over have a pre-engineered something that's, you know, four inches, even if it's over engineered and delivered and put that in the place and that could be in the same realm as the two inch, just as long as it hit those thresholds on being a carport, no occupancy, under a certain amount of square feet.
Because this, this isn't necessarily anything that needs to be in ordinance, this is just streamlining our procedures. I can come up with a handful of options. I can, I can even implement on residential structures that are U occupancies and move something through pretty fast while we work on an ag exemption that's broader, because that will require an ordinance, that will require potentially modifications to the building code to be submitted to, to the state. I mean, we can, we can do, those would be the long-term solutions, the short-term solutions is streamlining what we can. And I would limit it to prepackaged tube steel structures that, you know, are limited to the minimum dimensions for those engineered products, for those prepackaged products, and get those out the door a lot faster. We can do that.
Mr. Toffenelli?
I want to make sure that we understand that this has to be pre-engineered building, without the engineering specs.
Agreed.
And then going back to something that you said earlier, I have some concerns on, because you said that you don't collect, we're going back to the structural parts of it, and this could be part of this also. You don't collect MTRs, underneath the material, the iron, you don't collect any MTRs, you don't collect paperwork or rebar, rebar used, you don't collect paperwork or concrete. So you have none of that in any of your files at all, because you don't have that set up. So when we're, when we're going over and doing our permit issuing process, we don't have anybody that knows what any of the MTR means or says for this type of material to be used. And this is the essential strength and all that information to verify it.
I've only done a cursory review of the program. I can say I do not have a special inspection program that is being monitored. I know that they, I know that we are requiring special inspections at the appropriate time. From what I've seen, we haven't collected everything. I know what is required. Once again, we've had, we've had a huge turnover of staff. We have no institutional knowledge left, so what I'm seeing now is that we're not collecting some of this data. Okay, that doesn't mean it's not getting done, it is getting done because people need their insurance paid, you know, they need their-
We need to make sure that, that these pre-engineer builders that we're talking about regards to the size, I don't care, my concern is the wind load and any other load on them. They don't end up hurting somebody or destroying another property because, and then it comes back that we locate it. I just need to make sure that we keep that paperwork and we have that paperwork and, and we set up the program so we have it organized and it goes through the files and we can rely on it.
I concur.
Ms. Fuldorff?
I still need some clarification. So on one of these bullet points for open bay or general storage, equipment storage, I would still need to come in to you to get a permit for the storage container that I put the four wheeler in, for example.
Well, storage containers are entirely separate.
But that's where I guess it's, you're putting a shell, the description in here, equipment storage, any type of equipment storage, at what point do you come to your office to get this exemption? So I've got to go to you each time I want to have a storage for the four wheeler and how do you get this exemption? I mean, where, at what point are you walking into the building to get this exemption? Until there's a code-
Are we talking about where we intend to go with this or where we're at right now?
Now.
Now, right now, any structure-
What you're suggesting here, but yes, now, I guess.
Okay, so where we're at right now is any structure over 120 square feet requires a building permit, which means any stable, any shade structure, any patio, any carport, anything over 120 square feet requires a building permit. Now, where we want to go is establishing some boundaries to recognize not occupiable structures intended for storage of farm equipment, for crop protection, for, you know-
So I still would have, based on this, I would have to come in and to you?
Ba, yes.
Yeah, no.
It's already that, what he's saying is, right now is it's already that way, Amanda?
Yeah.
So all these ranchers that aren't doing it, they're already against the rules. This, this would potentially-
And I understand that, but how do you get, my question is, how do you get the exemption? You just, so at what point is it an issue? Like, how are you going to regulate this? If you're asking us to put a park, how are you going to regulate it?
You either, you either make a system where the, the building is automatically exempt and we don't get involved, or we go through a process where the bare minimum is an application, a site plan, and one inspection at the end to make sure it's where you said it was going to go and we're done. I mean, that's really where the ag exemption is in, in other jurisdictions. It's either one or the other. Either we're not involved at all because it's exempt, or you declare it and we see it once and it's exempt. I really understand that you don't want me on your farm. I don't blame you.
It just, you know, government wants to be making this easier and with workload just on staff, but also how many people are going to be lined up at the door to get this thing up for an exemption? I mean, you have an automatic machine like swipe here, I just see more work than needed and it just makes it more convoluted. I mean, just my confusion alone, and imagine what the public is, it just-
No, I, I, I understand. No, I-
I want to be open with, yeah, I understand where you're coming from, but it just is exact sense.
And I'm, I'm not against what you're saying, Ms. Fuldorff, but right now, it's even a worst case scenario without us putting forward the exemption. The fact is, what they say in our code right now is they want you to come in and get a permit regardless. Am I right?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I understand where you're coming from, I'm not arguing with you.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to talk this out, keep the public listening to this. I mean, we need to be clear what the communication is. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, and, and, and for, for all of you ranchers out there that just heard that discussion, I am not the devil. And that being said, guys-
All the ranchers got in your picture with a red line to post it.
Yeah, yeah, that's going to be, get rid of that, get rid of that Doug Oliver. No, and to be clear, the program, the building permit process, part of what we're talking about here is really streamlining it to make it easy interface to encourage people to participate. Even with, even with the, and I've said this before, even with the best processes, the cheapest fees and the most informative, effective code compliance process, you're still going to get 25% of your population not getting permits because they don't want to or because they don't know. And we, and I will automatically assume right now that every rancher out there is getting permits when they need to and, you know, they're following all the rules. Our, because our code compliance process is not out there to go catch the bad guys, it's to inform people and to get them into compliance. I understand that some of these are very uncomfortable and I've, I had a rancher a couple of days ago that had a code compliance officer go out and say, "Hey, did you know you needed a permit for that?" When he came in and saw the permit fee, "I'm not going to pay for that, it's just this." You're right, it is, it is. So what, where are we at now? We're in compliance. How do we gain compliance? And that's part of the traditions, going back to the beginning of this presentation, you don't teach your staff that it was built wrong or that it was built in a wrong place, you teach everyone that it's just built. Now, how do we work with the person to get it into compliance? I see an ag exemption method as an effective tool for gaining compliance for people who didn't know. Also, if it's outside the boundaries, it would make it easier to get it inside the boundaries. I told the guy, "Hey, you got one building that's over 120 square feet. You could have two buildings right next to each other that's, that are 120 square feet. Okay, I'll cut it in half and give you a call." Great, okay, now you don't need a building permit. Okay, I'm, I am happy to lose revenue to get people to comply, okay? So, so that being said, an ag exemption process is really, you know, the answer to a lot of these, these concerns out there. And we can streamline when we do need a building permit, and that's, now I'm going to try and pull us back into the, the presentation, I apologize for the, for the distraction. But the plans of mental considerations, if we can treat this, some of these structures like the streamlined process for solar or the streamlined process for accessory dwelling units, and we say, "Here's a checklist, bring us all these items and we can sit down and go through this in an hour and get it out the door. Here's, if you, if you meet these criteria, we can put you in this program." That would take it down from a two week wait to a one hour review and a three day wait, conceivably. Now, in some of these cases, I mentioned decks and carports, we can work with planning and see if there's a way that if our staff know the setbacks or can look up the setbacks and we know this guy is putting something 100 feet from all property lines, do we need to route that plan? Maybe not. Maybe we can get it done and out over the counter. I'm saying maybe. I've talked to a few other department heads, we're amenable to the discussion, but it takes an interdepartmental communication to push some of these things out the door same day. But it takes a checklist. If you're going to fall into this category of streamlined permitting, here are the things you have to bring us. And then if they don't bring us everything, we can circle the parts they missed and say, "Okay, when you can bring all that back to us, then we'll get it out the door same day." We can do that, we can do that. Now, with steel buildings, when you're talking about commercial applications or large warehouse type things, there's a threshold. I would say that agricultural storage or equipment storage, where you do need a building permit, you could streamline it down to maybe a five day turnaround, maybe, rather than, you know, what we have currently. As it stands now, it's in the bracket of commercial structure, so it, the goal is 20 working days. If we have a streamlined process like this, we could, we could fast track it because they've given us everything we need. We're not having to look for it in plan review, it's right there in front of us, it's declared and it's easier to get through. Taking it down to 20 days would be good. We did it once, we can get staffing back and do it again, but if you want it faster than a 20 day turnaround, a checklist format and a streamlined process could do the trick. We could bring it down to five to 10 days.
What type, what type of buildings?
We're looking at essentially open bay style residential applications, light, light commercial, like small storage structures, anything that doesn't have any electrical, plumbing, mechanical, open bays is what I'm talking about. We can define it down to open bays, that saves you time. If it saves you time, it also saves you on inspections. So if we've reduced the amount of inspections and we've reviewed, reduced the amount of plan review time, then we can talk about reducing the fees.
Yes.
Where are you, Mr. Toffenelli? Fuldorff? Ms. Coway? Thank you. That's a yes.
Very good.
I do have one question though, or concern, when you spoke about decks. Did you include decks in this category also?
In the fee reduction or in the timeframe?
In the timeframe.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're reviewing those very well because a lot of them are different heights, different footings underneath them, the structure itself, what it's holding up, because a lot of times you have people that build a deck, Maria had a deck that's quite high, and then afterwards it's all bought up, "Oh, I want to put a hot tub out there."
Right.
It wasn't designed for a hot tub, it was designed for maybe some lounge chairs and a barbecue. So the concerns I have is, is making sure that we identify the type of footings being used, that the structure is up higher than a certain amount of feet, 10 feet, five feet, whatever, and the use for it and whether, what it's actually has been engineered and materials that are being used to make it and construct it. Because the number of people, even the number of people that go out there, if they don't put a hot tub in there, you end up having, it's designed for some lounge chairs again and maybe a barbecue or something, you end up having a party and 30 people go out on that deck and it's not designed to hold 30 people, that amount. 30 people go out on that deck. And it's not designed to hold 30 people, that amount of weight. I just have those concerns that, that you could have some potential problems if we don't go over and, and look at it.
I, I can, I can address that for you, cause I, I have no objection to anything you just said. In fact, that's, that's critically important, especially in the last few years with the amount of deck collapses in the state. So, I would, I would just say, um, a deck construction, patio construction, there is an engineered method and there is a prescribed method in the code. What we would wanna do is take a prescriptive design method that's already in place and then modify it for our local conditions, and then set limits on the height and the size, and then the snow loading. Okay? And that's a good segue. I can, I can go back to the fees in order to get, you know, cause I know we're running out of time here. I'm certain we're running out of time here. Uh, but I will say that, that when it comes to decks and, uh, and patio covers, we have some prescriptive guidance already out there through other jurisdictions and through the wood product associations. Say if you use these, they give you tables. You circle what you're gonna use and that meets the span if you're in this snow load, if you're in this category. We can take that, we can actually push it out, cause the building code allows you to design using that code all the way up to a 70-pound ground snow load. Well, the handout that was produced by the Wood Product Association tops out at 40 pounds. So how do we resolve that? We place an addendum in it for the higher snow load all the way up to 70 that has different span tables. You select your spans. So if they can follow that prescriptive method, circle what they're using, give us a site plan with where it's going, we can spend an hour and get it out the door. Or get it done at the counter within an hour and get it out the door. Now, as soon as they cross the line, it's over 14-foot tall. It's over 10-foot wide. It's in 100-pound snow load. We can't do that. It has to go in the queue. But, but what I'm looking at here is, it may spend, we may spend about the same amount of time, cause I can, I can plan check a deck in about a half hour. Of course, I've been doing this a long time. On average, it's about an hour if you're looking at an engineered structure. Everybody up the hill does an engineered structure. Okay? It's not the amount of time we're spending actually doing the review. It's the fact that so many people are bringing them in and putting them in the queue that it takes a couple of weeks to get to it. If we can bypass that with these streamlined methods and do it right at the counter. On Wednesday afternoon, we have a plan checker available for four hours. Book your, book your appointment. Come in and get your, your deck permit over the counter, or get it to where we can route it for three days and you're approved. That's, that's where we can go. Cause there are thresholds. You're absolutely right. There are thresholds where we just can't cross. 70 pounds, we can't cross. You know, 14, over, over 14, I believe, is where you're in danger on, on tall structures. So we can definitely set those thresholds. Make it a circle what you're going to use and turn it in, please. That's what'll get this through faster. And, and the more we can take things out of the plan review stream, the faster all the other reviews go.
Think we got a yes on that? So.
We don't permit, we don't permit hot tubs, do we?
There's certainly, there's a lot of aspects to.
Is there anything?
Yes. It's the electrical, it's the electrical safety in hot tubs that you have to check for. And then if you put them on the deck, yes, they weigh a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On a, on a deck, yes.
Yeah, it, it's the electrical with the GFI application, so no one gets electrocuted that I've had to deal with.
Lockable covers, so nobody, nobody's kids get in and drown, you know, all that fun stuff.
I mean, I guess we can't just trust people not to do stupid stuff.
I don't know how I made it this far.
So with that being said, I think there's only one item left. I wanna backtrack to the fee structure for, for these metal buildings because currently, um, these structures are based on the occupancy. So if you tell me it's a new commercial building, you're telling me it's gonna be a, a strip mall, or a educational center, or a church, or something like that. The fee is the same, cause it's, it's a similar amount of plan check time. And that's currently, per our new fee structure, 7,052. If you're going to make it a shell or warehouse, any type of open bay storage currently, it's 3,722. That's saying that there's a lot of stuff that isn't involved and we don't look at it. Now, if we go further and say, okay, there's no insulation, there's no heat, there's nothing, it's just a foundation, the steel frame and I'm going to store hay in it, or I'm going to store a couple of tractors in it. Uh, i- if we can get this down to a system where the review time is down and we're only doing maybe two, three inspections, you could give me direction to use the other fee. By that, I mean a fee called other permits, which we put there on purpose for the stuff that didn't quite fit in any category. And that is a base fee of $1,212. It accounts for one hour of plan review, two inspections, and administrative time. And then if you can get under that threshold and get it done with just those inspections, then that's the fee. For every hour over the first on plan review, it's an additional $139. For every inspection after the second, it's $139. So it would tailor to the scope of the project. And, and if we wanna, if, if, I get concurrence today, what we do is say, any of these open bay structures that fit that category of agricultural, not developed, not for human habitation, we're going to treat it as an other, I can, I can start feing it that way for these structures.
I guess my feeling is you had submitted the fee structure recently. And you're the expert in this. And yet, and you did say long-term. You're, you're making a, um, decision on the other permit fee based on your experience of what it takes. And then you talk about streamlining the time in motion, similar to what you did for the others. So is this something that you're recommending we do now? And then whenever six months or a year, you come back after you do the time in motion?
Essentially, that's what I'm saying. I mean, currently, when, when I brought the fee structure forward, our time motion studies were based on, uh, an average time spent for average use types. Since then, we've been bombarded with an unusual use type in metal buildings that could potentially have less time spent to process these permits. So in the interim, we can use this fee and charge out based on the actual time spent until we have enough, uh, background in our system to say, we can have a fee just for that type of structure.
Thank you.
Is that a yes, Ms. Cowley? Mr. Toffenelli?
And, and you're talking shell or warehouses only?
Anything that falls within that, the category of not occupiable, um, not occupiable. We can set a, a threshold on square footage if you wish, but generally agricultural type structures or open bays that meet the criteria of residential accessory, we could do that as well.
Sure.
I, I'm a yes. Was there something further you wanna say, Ms. Feldorf? Okay, so that's a yes.
Very good.
Long-term.
Can, can we go back up to the structural, steel, that are the, and, and I'm talking pre-engineered metal buildings or Pem buildings? And what, what is it, what, if I come in with a Pem building and, um, I'm gonna construct it. Say it wasn't for agriculture. It was for occupancy. What, what, what exactly, what exact inspections are you going to do with our inspectors versus the special inspectors? Let, let's say I'm gonna put in, um, a metal building that's 100 by 200. And the concrete is going to be 5,000 PSI. Uh, the footings are, are gonna be 12 inches wide and 24 inches deep. Um, there's gonna be rebar every 12 inches and two strands going on footings connecting them all together. There's gonna be, um, half-inch rebar, number five rebar, um, on grid, um, through the footings, I mean, through the metal building for 5,000 slab, uh, pound slab is four. Um, I have anchor bolt set in eight places, two, four, six, eight places. Um, the anchor bolts are engineered, pre-engineered, set in, uh, the size of footing that's required, mine is 48 by 36 or what have you. Um, it's all been pre-engineered. And then the pre-manufactured building goes up before any of the insight is done. We just have the Pem building itself. What inspections are you going to do for our inspectors during that process versus what we're gonna put out the special inspection? And then are you gonna go over and look, overlook what the special inspectors that I've paid for to do the job on top of what they've already done?
Do you want me to focus on the structural elements, or you do want me to carry through the entire project?
No, I, I wanna just, the, the Pem building itself, not.
Very good.
Or I'm gonna put walls up or anything, just because those, that's for that structure itself. Everything else inside has to do with other trades and other things that are going on. I just wanna concentrate on that are standard, those, those would be standard inspections.
Okay, so, so.
Looking for the special inspectors that has to do with Pem buildings going down to the bolts that require a 325 or 425 bolt, any welding that needs to be done, any concrete inspection, anything the special inspector is required to do.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with the, I'm gonna try and blast through this, um, cause there's a lot to it. There's a lot to it.
There is.
Uh, we're going to inspect, the first inspection we're going to do generally, if there's no plumbing installed, is the foundation inspection. If there is plumbing, we do a rough plum before they set the, you know, they'll have the form set, they'll have nothing else.
That's not, that's not.
No, it's not. So we, we'll do that. We'll also do, in, in the foundation inspection, we are going to check all the steel. We're gonna check all the footing sizes. We're gonna check the footing locations. We're going to check the, the, the UFR ground, uh, or the bonding, uh, to any of the bolts. We're gonna inspect the bolt patterns and the bolt look, uh, bolt sizes and depth. Make sure that the, the bolts for that steel are not anywhere near the, uh, the edges of the foundation. We're going to check your driveway requirements if, if the occupancy type isn't an accessory. We're gonna check your driveway requirements to make sure we're complying with 4290. Uh, we're going to check the setbacks to other buildings and to the property lines. We're gonna check easements. We're gonna check drainage. We're gonna check, uh, uh.
Doug, I understand, I understand that. That's, that's standard inspection. I'm talking about above, you, you talked earlier about your inspector to go out and make sure there's a weld there, there's a bolt there.
Well, let's.
I, I wanna talk about just the requirements above special inspection. Uh, you, you're saying that we're, I'm going to pay for a special inspector to, to watch the welding if, if it's required 24/7 or whatever it's required, cause a lot of welding, if it's just fill it well, under certain size, is not requirement for an inspector to be there continuously. Um, bolting, um, special inspection, just call for, for, for bolting, make sure the torque is right, testing torque, unless you're using a TC bolt. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with a TC bolt is. It's a torque control bolt that the tip breaks off when you hit the right.
Right, right.
Are you gonna go back over after you have a special inspector's report in your hand saying it's all bought up, I verified it, everything's correct? Your inspector's gonna go back out and check the bolts, look at wells, um, any of that stuff?
Okay, so, so. The short answer is yes. And, and, but we're not looking at exactly the same thing. So jurisdiction managing this special inspection program is collecting all the documentation and reading the documentation to make sure that they test it appropriately and in the right locations. And we also go and check every connection because only a percentage of the connections, uh, on bolts, uh, in some cases, only a percentage of those bolts are tested. Uh, in, in many cases, it's periodic inspection and random sampling. And we have to make sure that if, if any of those cases are correct, we are checking to make sure the rest of the system is done. Uh, they don't generally check the bolted connections on the girts between the red iron frame. We check all that. They're, we're making sure that all bolts are in place. They're making sure set numbers are torqued appropriately. Now, that's not to say that in some jurisdictions that, that the building inspectors will do turn of the nut method on anything that's not slip critical joints. And that's, that's something that we could implement into our program if we wanted to go that way and save them the, the special inspection. Uh, that, that being the case, there's a lot of stuff that we're responsible for making sure get done because from personal experience, special inspectors are looked at what they, they look at what they were paid to look at. And that means that when, during the foundation inspection, if we know there was fill and we say we need compaction testing, did they only test the top 12 inches, or did they test every eight inches per the geotechnical report? We have, we are responsible for verifying that the work got looked at correctly, and that the person doing the work was certified appropriately for that special inspection. And we have the authority to reject them if they've done the job wrong. I have personally done that. So, so there's a lot that goes into it. And now, is it gonna take four hours to do a steel inspection? Not on your average residential application. It'll still only take maybe an hour, but we're gonna, we have to collect all that documentation. We do have to review it, and we do have to retain it. And if there are errors, we have to point that out so the special inspector goes out and rectifies it.
I, 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 I understand what you're saying. I completely understand what you're saying. However, I, I don't think, when, when I call for a special inspection on welding, what I'm getting is a certified welding inspector that knows exactly what he's looking at and what's supposed to be there, and how long it's supposed to be, and how big it's supposed to be, and where it's supposed to be. That's his job. He's a certified welding inspector. He knows the process. He knows what application is supposed to be done. He's supposed, he knows what rod or wire is supposed to be used. He checks all of that. He fills out a form and says he has checked that and he has done that. I understand he turns those forms into you and you review them. I understand that. But I'm, 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 you know, I. I don't wanna do double for a building, especially when, when something that's pre-engineered. Um, and, yes, special inspector is supposed to make sure that the, all the bolts are in place and they've all been torqued. That's his job. He's supposed to review all of that and make sure when he goes through and he writes his report and says he's bought it off, that everything is done in compliance with code and what he's drawing to call for. Um, that's his job. That's what he gets paid to do. I, I don't know what your experience with special inspectors have been. Um, I'm sure there have been some out there that, that just walk up and do whatever and sign off and walk away. Um, but my experience over the time I've had, um, working with special inspection labs, that they're good labs. Um, they send the proper people out to do the job, and they do their job very well. I've gotten arguments over special inspectors that I've lost, had to go back and do what they required me to do for them to sign off. And then went to the building department. But very rarely do I have, um, an inspection from the city or the county come out and wanna go up in a basket, go around and look at everything that's already been bought off by a special inspector. I, I, I very rarely see that at all. Usually the inspector for the city shows up and he gets the report from the special inspection lab and maybe asks him a couple questions and, and he signs off on permit, um, for that phase of it. I, I just.
I would concur with you that in, in general, special inspectors know and do their jobs. Okay, now, that being said, I was tied up in a civil litigation suit for several years because. because a special inspector was paid essentially to sit in his truck while the metal fabrication company failed to install welds or welded over paint and created a significant problem. And in addition to that, I've had to reject a special inspector from a very high priority county project because they were failing to do the job.
That's not a good contractor, and it's probably not a good lab that we wouldn't want to have a special lab.
No, it was a reputable lab.
Well, in that case... The civil, and I, there's bad actors in everything in the world, unfortunately. And unfortunately, those guys did it, and there's legal recourse for that situation. The county cannot be picking up legal recourse for every darn thing. Reciprocating that work for a licensed and bonded special inspector through the state makes no sense to me either. It's, I understand, but it's overly redundant, and at that time, there's legal recourse for those special inspectors. At the point, at the point where we start picking up every one of these other things, we're taking responsibility for what they didn't do. If we miss it also. I, am I understanding where you're going, Mr. Toffnelli?
Yeah, I just want, I don't, I mean, I've dealt with this for all of my life, and very seldom, I can't even remember a job that something like that occurred. Special inspectors at most labs do a very good job, including going to the cement plant when it's being mixed, the cement's being mixed, to make sure the right sack is in there for the temp that what they're using for, and taking sump tests and recording all of that, and then breaking cylinders at specific dates that they're supposed to, the seven, 21, and 30 day span to break the cylinders and recording all of that. And I've seen rebar guys have to redo, because the special inspector wouldn't buy it off of what they did. So they have to relay the whole path because they were off, all because the special inspector is doing their jobs. If they don't do their job, and what you were talking about, the contractor obviously wasn't a good contractor, and very rarely do I see that. I mean, an honest contractor is going to do exactly what it says on the plans that need to be done, because it comes back on him ultimately. He's the one that did the work. And if he didn't do it correctly, then it's going to come back to him. So inspection is to make sure they've done their job correctly, and I understand that. But special inspection also is that, because we don't have the ability or the people with the right paperwork and the necessity to do those jobs. That's why they're there. That's why we hire special inspectors to go out, because that's our specialty. That's what they do. So, I mean, Doug, I'm telling you, I very, very, very rarely ever see a county or city inspector going up in baskets looking at bolts or wells or anything else. They rely on special inspection to do it, including, you mentioned that we don't have it set up, including special inspection going to shops, getting the material test report, the MTR for the steel, and verifying the heat numbers are correct with the paperwork and the material being used, and writing off and signing off on that, to which we should be getting that paperwork also, even if it's a Pem building. There's special inspection in those shops, looking at weld and materials coming in if we require the MTR for that material. We should be collecting that information also. So we have a complete record of all that steel that was used for that project in case something fails, and to make sure that it was what was engineered out for, whether it was A36, whether it was A572, whatever was spec'd out, to make sure the MTR reports coincide with that. Although most steel now is dual grade, it's 572 or A36. It's a dual grade material, so the tensile strength is what...
Well, they've also changed the bolt naming convention, so that's fine. I guess, I guess I'll say, let me see if I can, let me see if I can explain this. To be clear, we're not doing the same job as a special inspector, and we're not duplicating their work. We are, in some ways, I can see where you can, you can say that that's the case. Essentially, a special inspector is qualified to do a specific job really well, and when special inspectors are required, it's because it's so important, we need an extra set of eyes. Not, not that one person that's smarter looks at it or one person is more qualified. In some cases, it is true that we look at the same thing, but we're looking at different things. In my experience, if someone isn't getting on a bucket to look at the bolts if he can't see them, then he's not doing his job. If we're not collecting the documents, like you mentioned, he's not doing his job. These are minimum code standards, and I've enforced them. I've been on the lifts. I've collected the information myself. I've done every one of these inspections. I'm not going to ask staff to do anything that I haven't done, and I'm not going to ask staff to do something that isn't in the code. Anything that, so I don't want anyone thinking that we're duplicating work. There are requirements that we have to meet. It's a minimum standard. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't find a way to make it move faster, that we should have staff trained to hit the ground and have a standard that we will have all this done in a half hour, or we will have all this done in an hour. If we, if there's a situation where it's taking too long, that's a training issue or a procedural issue, and it's also, in some times, a communication issue where the builder does not have what we're looking for on site. I would prefer to adhere to the code and speed up the process through training and outreach than disregard code requirements. You can be assured that I'm not going to duplicate work that isn't absolutely necessary or required. But, I mean, your board could also decide to instruct me not to enforce certain components of these steel building standards, in which case, that's fair. Your board can direct me to do that. I don't recommend it. I've inspected a lot of different high-profile structures using steel and concrete, and I will tell you that there's a reason why we do these things. Those people are, yes, by and large, they are good inspectors, they are competent, they are well-trained, until the day they are not. And the day they are not, and we don't catch it, bad things happen, and I've seen those bad things happen. I don't want to be in front of the state fire marshal's office again, having them say, "You're going to fix this, or you're going to tear it all down." I don't want to be there. I don't want, in any way, for any member of the public or this county to suffer any hardship because we failed to enforce a component of the code. And I understand they're inconvenient. I do, especially in a rural community. I get it. I mean, we've basically been told, "I shouldn't be going on anybody's ranches." But there is a minimum standard in that, and if it's, I'm having fun here, come on. I'm trying to take a little air out of this, because this is serious to me.
We're barking up on noon. We're here real quick, and we, we're going to have to probably pick the next item. So are we comfortable with the inspection process, Mr. Toffnelli? Was there more you wanted to talk to that, as long as he's not reciprocating the work?
If he's not reciprocating the work, I mean, they have to go out and do inspections. I just want to make sure that we're not double-charging for something that we should only be doing one time. And I certainly don't want to not follow any codes. Certainly, that's not my idea of doing good work, strictly enforcing, follow all codes in the building trades. That's a must. I don't want to overlook. And you're talking about exemptions. I didn't agree on exemptions on these other ones, but, because I think, just being in the building trade all of my life, I've seen a lot of different things happen that you wouldn't think happened, and a lot has to do with the wind and what wind can do, especially when you've got a load on a building that's probably pretty close to what it can hold, and then you get a 60 mile an hour, 100 mile an hour gust of wind. It's not pretty.
Would it be fair to say, sir, that it'd probably be a good idea if I brought back a study session to your board explaining the difference between our inspections and the special inspections, and bring you a program? Or would you rather I just implement a program, and if you have concerns, we can talk about it after that?
Well, a lot of it's implementing the program. I don't think we need to have a study session just on inspections. Go ahead, Mr. Toffnelli. I'm sorry I interrupted.
And then when it comes to a Pem building that's pre-engineered, I understand that somebody turns in a plan that has a bunch of walls and electrical and plumbing, because they're using it for commercial purposes or whatever that is, it was just office buildings, or a DA's building or what have you, that you need to verify and everything that's there is correct. But just a Pem building, a shell of a Pem building, is there any way to streamline that since they're already pre-engineered and everything on it's engineered, and as long as it's followed, that engineer of record is the one that's going to have anything, if anything happens, it'd be on him, since he signed off on it.
I think the direction we're heading with the exemption process, we'll cover that for you.
What was the policy question? We've basically covered most everything here, but there's one last thing I want to bring up. I want to see if the board has appetite for. When it comes to workforce housing, like affordable housing, and enticing developers, we're encouraging developers to move in that direction. I mean, more often than not, developers are building big, expensive homes, or what someone hired them to build for themselves. Recently, I mean, you can agree or disagree with me, housing prices have gone through the roof, long-term rentals are going down. I don't think going the route of Tuolumne County and constraining short-term rentals, trying to make them long-term rentals, is actually going to pin out, because those houses are too expensive to rent them out at the rate that's affordable. So does the board have appetite to possibly ask Doug to get together with planning and other departments and come up with some ideas or to incent, incentive, or bring exemptions or waivers forward, so that maybe it pencils out to bring in more workforce-style affordable housing into the county? Because there's a lot of businesses that are looking for people to work for them, and most of the people that take on those type of salaries are getting squeezed out of affordable housing in their respective areas in the county. Not all, but a few. Is there appetite for that?
Well, we have a housing coordinator
Right.
who works in Health and Human Services.
And I talk to Lee consistently, but this goes hand in hand, and she works in planning at the same time.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm asking Doug to get together with them and come up with some ideas to possibly bring back to the board in the future.
I guess I'd leave it up to the CAO to try and put something together. I mean, I'm totally supportive of that.
Yes.
And supportive of what Health and Human Services is doing, but I guess I'd leave it up to the CAO to try and orchestrate what it is that you're looking for.
I'm open to any way that we could create more workforce housing for people to be
Yeah, that's... I said, I put workforce here. I didn't say it. I wrote it down.
I think we're all hugely aware of the challenges, so if we have a presentation, I don't want it to be about the challenges, because we know this. But if there's some good ideas out there that we can implement, yeah, absolutely.
My recommendation at this point is that we include this in the discussion that I believe we'll be tabling today for the next steps in terms of choosing study sessions, and then that will give me an opportunity. This is something that's clearly in front of us right now, so to put together a proposal.
No worries. It kind of crossed over both sides, so I was trying to figure out where I was going to bring it up. Ms. Feldner?
When you do bring that, can you bring what the state mandate is on the county and where we met the percentages? Because I think part of that should be a good comparison of how far you go with working with developers too, like what of our mandates versus what have we met.
Yes, Ms. Kimball does have that information, and that would certainly be included in the discussion. I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
A lot of state regulations out there
Yeah.
for, once starting in October, that could affect enormously the prices.
Anything further on the building issue?
Mr. Oliver, did we answer the question about the fee?
Yes, thank you. Okay, what, public comment?
I have no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Does the board have appetite to table our study session item on our priorities and study sessions? Till next meeting?
If you can do it within 20 minutes, I'm okay doing it now.
Do you think we can do it in 20 minutes?
It's a one-hour estimate, Simon.
I think it deserves a little more time. I almost took 10 minutes with just asking my question on workforce.
Workforce, there you go.
Housing. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Oliver. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Everyone's okay with tabling until, till the next item until the next meeting, I assume? And with that, any board announcements?
Yes, I did do that.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair, although I do have a CPBA meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning. At LAFCO last night with Maria, it was a good meeting.
Ms. Coway, make any deals at LAFCO last night?
I did, but I can't report them out.
Mr. Guerminde?
I'm required to report it.
I'm also not required to report at this time. You all have a wonderful day. We'll close this meeting.